Happy Tuesday, everyone, and welcome to the Boja City Council. Today is Tuesday, March 6th, 2018, 3 o'clock PM. We have the call to order invocation, Jeff Darby, Pledge of Allegiance, Mr. Dunn Williams. Please stand.
Father, we thank you for this time that we've come to this place for the business of the city. We thank you for those who are here. We thank you for those who are public servants, and we thank you, Lord God, for those who are committed to service. We ask that you continue to direct us and lead us and guide us. We thank you for your blessings from above. We thank you, Lord God, for this city, this state, this country. We ask that you, Lord, be pleased in what we do. We pray for those who may be sick among us. We ask that you would give them recovery, give them healing, in the name of Jesus, I pray. Amen.
And please face the flag and please pray.
Our Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Montgomery? Mr. Larkin? Absent. Mr. Irwin?
Here.
Mr. Darby?
Here.
Mr. Williams?
Here.
Mr. Free?
Here.
Mr. Harvey?
Here.
The chair will entertain a motion to approve.
Second.
Have a motion, a second, please, cast your vote.
Council, we only have one thing for the agenda today. We need to remove number one under new business. And that's it.
Okay. Motion to approve with deletion.
Make a motion where approve the agenda with the deletion.
Have a motion, a second. Council, please cast your vote. Any special guests today? Ceremony matter, we have Mr., well, we're gonna start with Manchek, and then we'll have Mr. Kelly Wells.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. I was asked to give our status update on the Public Utilities Department and how things have been going over the last, really over the last year. So I'm just gonna get right in, and just stop me if you have any question. Most of these slides you've seen before, they're mainly updated through the end of the year, so through December of 2017. And what this slide shows is all of the divisions within the Utility Department, and you see what we actually saved per division versus what we had budgeted to save for the City of Boja. So when you get down to the end, we were targeted to save approximately 2.1 million in operational expenses, and we actually saved just over 2.5 million in operational savings, so did very well in 2017. And what we do there is compare, just as a reminder, we looked at the 2016 budget and compared that to our proposed 2017 budget to come up with what that target is. So we did, we beat our expectations. So you kind of break that down in a little bit more detail. Again, the actual operational savings was a little over 2.5 million. That equates to over $200,000 a month in monthly savings versus a target of around $175,000 per month. So we're in excess of $400-plus thousand this year, or we run about $35,000, $36,000 in additional savings every month, and that's operating capital. So that's good news. Some of the other things we look at are the emergency work. We spent almost $1.9 million in total emergency repairs throughout the course of the year. Historically, the City of Boja would go into a contract without soliciting quotes for that work. We, we get quotes, we do it quickly, and we do all the engineering and the construction admin, all of that is done internally. And so we come up with a cost avoidance, if you will, savings there of about 400, we'll call it about half a million dollars just in doing that work. The other area, we call it cost avoidance, these are things that we do internally that have historically not been internally performed. Anywhere from big to little projects, you may see a crew out on East Texas right now doing a big gravity sewer main repair, that's, that's being done internal by the City of Boja. All of that stuff adds up. So when you get to the end, if you figure all of the operation savings, the emergency work, and cost avoidance, you're looking at in excess of $4 million in overall savings by the Utility Department, so they're, they're doing well. Outside of that, we've been very active. I don't wanna, I don't, unless you're very interested in these things, you know, we review the budgets, both capital, we review the five-year capital expense plan and the operating budgets continuously, those things are very dynamic. We've gone through and revised all of the job descriptions for the whole department, updated those, and on and on it goes. So we're constantly trying to refine and improve all the various little systems that we have within the Utility Department to make it better. That's really it. Does anybody have any questions related to that information?
I'd just like to tell you all, thank you for all your service to the City of Boja, and it's been a wonderful partnership, which I think the Council and the Mayor would, and the administration as well, would say it's been a pleasure to do business with y'all, and we hope to continue that through the future. Just to put things in perspective, their estimated savings budget was 2.1 million, they ended up saving roughly 2.5 million. I believe the cost of the raises to the Utilities Department was 400?
That's correct.
I mean, I'm speaking in general terms, so just in that additional savings that was recuperated, both on the efforts of Manchak as well as the employees of the Water and Sewer Department, they were able to cover the cost of their raises. Now that's real business being applied to city government, and again, my hats off both to the employees of Boja City Administration as well as Manchak, so thank you for all y'all do.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a comment. I just want to compliment Ben himself for his hands-on involvement in these projects, and I think that's gone a long way in making them as successful as they have been, but also how well he works with and cooperates with Pam, and an excellent team, and we appreciate the great work y'all doing.
Yeah, and it, it is a good partnership between our company, Utility Department, and the city. You know, I can't think of anything that we've recommended or requested that we haven't been able to get quickly and, and get moving. So we're, we're very proud of the work, we're happy to be here, and on behalf of the Utility Department and all the employees that worked tirelessly, you know, 24/7, very much appreciative of the raises, I can tell you. You know, it blew a lot of wind in their sails, so we really, really appreciate that.
Thank you so much.
Thank you all.
Mr. Kelly Wells? The Boja Sports Commission?
Thank you, President Darby, and Mayor Walker, City Council. Bubba Williams. Yeah, I've not brought my team here before, but with being the Sports Commission, there's always a great team, and so I wanted to introduce them, if that's okay, President Darby.
Sure, sure, yes. We got Mr. Williams here, we have to stand up.
Got Ronald Oswalt, who is our sponsorship director, so he's in charge of raising private funds and does a really good job of that. Caberlin Douglas is our sales manager, so she works with me on presentations and also works with the hotels and sporting events to bring, you know, to help house all those folks. Sheila Norman's our Assistant Director in Operations, she's our Sergeant of Checklist for all the events that we're involved with. And then Teresa Michaels is our Volunteer Coordinator, Special Events Director. And again, they do a phenomenal job, and I just wanted to recognize them today.
Fantastic.
Because Bubba can tell you, I don't, without a team, you don't get things done.
And I tell you, they do, they do a great job, I mean, with volunteers and Sheila taking care of you and us, I mean, I appreciate, appreciate y'all what you do.
Of course, Bubba, and Coach Bohannon is the two appointees for the City of Boja. And I want to just update a couple of things that we've had over the last couple of weeks, and coming up, we had the State Wrestling Tournament over the CenturyLink, and Rebecca Bonavir and her team over there really did a great job, they've got a little country concert, Blake Shelton and not, so they were getting ready for that. But again, this was the third year we hosted the State Wrestling Tournament, record attendance, which was really great for our area. And again, with the state wrestling, it's always great to have the economic impact, which is a little bit over a million dollars, but it's also a great thing, like on Saturday night, the Mayor Walker was there to see Parkway bring home a state team championship, literally at the very end, so that makes it all worthwhile. And of course, we utilized about 160 volunteers throughout the weekend, and Senator Ryan Gaddy, we were able to feed the 170 coaches for the first time in the history of state wrestling. But again, that was Terry Slack with the FCA, we had a coach's tent set up behind the CenturyLink, so it was just a really neat opportunity, and really just another way to extend our hospitality to the coaches. I know City Councilman Montgomery came out for it on Saturday, and he's wanted to show me a headlock a few times, but, so we keep it on the mat. And then last weekend, we had the State Archery Tournament, and again, that, the regional and the state we've had for the last two years, and we've not really announced yet, but we did secure that again for next year. So again, you know, Boja Parish School just do a phenomenal job, and I believe, Ms. Phyllis, we, you know, there are age limits on that, but we've got a, if you look at the screen, we had somebody come out of nowhere and literally make the national team, which I think will be later this year. This was Mayor Walker at the press conference on a Thursday afternoon at the Convention Center, and that really was his shot, so.
That's good.
I'd be wanting to put an apple on my head for you, Mayor Walker.
Thank you for that, and I might add, there's a couple of times I wanted to get Mr. Montgomery's head in a log, but I've.
I was waiting on that.
I bought a bow and arrow, but they confiscated it back in the back.
He probably would have preferred the bow and arrow.
But we've just got some great things, we've got something, again, you know, one thing we really like to let people know is just, you know, to advocate that, you know, the sports events is an economic impact, so we're partnering, again, this will be our third year, we've done it the first two years at the Red River Brewery, but it'll be at the Hilton Homewood Suites Boja on Thursday, April the 5th, and we call it the Shreveport Boja Sports Biz Connect. So we partner with the Boja Chamber, Shreveport Chamber, African-American Chamber, and the North Louisiana Economic Development, and the Hilton Homewood Suites came on board, and so on that evening from 4:00 to 6:00, it's kind of like a chamber after hours, but we'll have approximately 70 sports groups from the Shreveport Boja area, everything from Strongman to Dixie to you name it, but, you know, it really surprised me how many, you know, we truly are sportsman's paradise in this area, so it's a free event, but it's really just an opportunity to engage the business community and the sports community, and really allow everybody to network, and again, this will be our third year, you know, and we're excited about doing that at the Hilton Homewood Suites, they're great partners. And I was talking to Kathy French about the Red River, we've got our first, we've got more national bass fishing tournaments lined up for this year than I think we've ever had in the history. So my understanding is the water's gonna go down to a good fishing level, but we'll kick the national tournaments off the first week of April with the ABA Ray Scott Nationals, which is the largest national bass trail, so they'll bring fishermen in from all 50 states to compete on the Red River. And then we'll have the BFL All-American and College Yeti National Bass Fishing in late May, early June, and both of those will be televised for now on NBC Sports. Of course, we'll have the Bass Central Open back as well. So again, we'll have the Powerboat Nationals coming up again, Labor Day weekend, you know, they got canceled out last year because of Hurricane Harvey, but we're super excited, we are gonna bring in even larger boats than what we had in the past, so. We were involved with about 134 sporting events last year, and we're on track to probably do about 150 this year. So it's really just partnerships and really the community getting on board, and of course, utilizing, you know, the venues that y'all invest in, and even some of the private partners invest in, and we're super excited about all the opportunities. Is there any?
No, I mean, did you say we have to rest on one more year, and then we'll bid it again?
Yeah, we've got the state wrestling one more year, and then that'll be bid next summer, and again, I appreciate the partnership of the City of Boja on helping to make that happen, and also the CenturyLink Center staff are just phenomenal. In fact, we got, you know, lots of comments on those, but again, it just really took an army of folks to make that happen. And I did get an update from John Reenie, and I was hoping for good news, but the Boja Parish boys were playing Kilgore, and they got beat. He just texted me a minute ago, 72 to 68, and then the girls play tomorrow at 1:00, and he was wanting to be here, but we did partner with BIPSY, and we will host the 2019 and 2020 Juco Region 14 Championships. So that's, you know, as you know, the Juco is the junior college, it's like SEC, you know, basketball. So we're super excited about hosting that, that'll be at the Gold Dome this same time next year, so again, that'll be a good opportunity, and so. Did I miss anything?
Kelly, Mr. Wells, thank you so much for building on that foundation of sportsman's paradise in Northwest Louisiana. Very good, thank you, team, for your work.
Thanks for having us today.
Thank y'all.
Any committed reports? Unfinished business?
Adopt an amended ordinance implementing budgetary controls and otherwise providing with respect thereto, final reading.
So moved.
Second.
In light of the fact that we have a councilman absent today, I would request, respectfully request that the council consider my motion to continue for two weeks.
Have a motion, Mr. Montgomery, is there a second?
A second.
Second, Mr. Williams, any comments? Council, please cast your vote.
Thank you, Council.
Thank you.
Adopt an ordinance appropriating $60,000 from the 2017 EMS Capital and Contingency Fund to purchase five more Aeroclave machines due to the widespread flu epidemic, final reading.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? The floor is open for comments. Please cast your vote.
Adopt an ordinance enacting Section 6-47 of the Boja City Code of Ordinances entitled Special Events Alcohol Permit, Festival Plaza Region, final reading.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion?
I guess I'll move that we postpone this for the same reason, with the councilman being absent.
Second.
For two weeks?
Yes, for two weeks.
Okay. Council, please cast your vote.
Item's postponed. Adopt an ordinance to appropriate $4,652.40 to come from the Sales Tax Capital Improvement Fund to be used for rewiring and reorganizing the computer equipment at the Boja Homeland Security Office, final reading.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion?
Can I ask one, I'm sorry, is this the, off of Shed Road, Doctor's Drive? Yeah, I was, my question was, with the flooding that has occurred historically, what are we pretty sure that ain't gonna happen going forward, or what precautions are? All I'm saying is, I mean, you know.
Well, if we finish Shed Road, that probably will be eliminated.
Yeah, that's what I was asking.
Did you say if we finish it?
Oh, I'm, I should have called, I should have called upon the czar of flooding, he has now arrived.
When we finish our project on Shed Road, drainage is gonna be much better.
Now, that is spoken like a true engineer. What in the world does much better mean from the point of?
It could always flood.
Pardon me?
It could always flood, but things are gonna be a whole lot better when we finish on Shed Road.
Where's that date, Mark?
Our finish date is in August still, yes, sir.
Of this year.
Of this year.
Are they working 24 hours?
No.
Not yet.
I thought I saw your news that it'll work 24 hours.
I had to walk up here.
Hey, you couldn't sit, man.
I know.
I could tell you were.
Couldn't wait to get up here.
You were ready. You hadn't been up here in a while.
We're supposed to get the first culvert under Airline Drive today, and once that happens, we can start laying the big box culverts down the road, and that's when they'll go to 24 hours a day.
Well done.
Take a bow.
Back away.
When they go into five days a week.
Does anyone have a summation of what that answer was?
Only an engineer, is there an engineer in the audience?
The summation is, they will at some point in time go to 24 hours a day, and we'll finish by mid-August.
All right. That explains it, thank you.
Any additional comments? Please cast your vote.
Adopt an ordinance amending Section 18-40, Section D5 regarding the prohibition of electrical fences, final reading.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? Comment? No comments, please vote.
Adopt an ordinance amending Section 118-4, TNC permit required, fees relative to the regulation of transportation network companies, final reading.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? Floor is open for comments. Please cast your vote.
Adopt an ordinance appropriating $56,000 plus benefits for a total of $78,864.84 from the General Fund fund balance to hire an Assistant Director of Permits, final reading.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? Comments? Please cast your vote. New business number, item two.
Adopt a zoning ordinance, first and final reading, petitioner Alan Mezenheimer, Mezenheimer Insurance Group, LLC, location 1012 Benton Road, Boja City, Louisiana, request zoning change from RLD Residential Low Density to B1 Business Office for an insurance office.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? Floor is open. Please cast your vote.
Introduce an ordinance requiring all demolitions or public works bids to be advertised and opened at a regular Boja City Council meeting, and to otherwise provide with respect thereto, first reading.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? Anyone? Please cast your vote.
Introduce an ordinance to appropriate funds to cover construction costs for the Golden Meadows Pump Station Number Two Improvements Project for a total of $850,000 to come from the 2016 LDQ Loan CS 221103-02, first reading.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? Anyone would like to speak on this item? Please cast your vote.
Introduce an ordinance to appropriate $5,000 to come from the Hotel Motel Tax Fund to be used to supplement the previously appropriated $460,000, all to be used for lighting controls and security upgrades for the CenturyLink Center Arena, first reading.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? Comments? Please cast your vote, Council.
Introduce an ordinance authorizing the hiring of an Information Services Systems Specialist and an Information Services Systems Administrator for an annual increase to the General Fund fund balance of $128,518.68, first reading.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? Anyone would like to speak on this item? Please cast your vote.
Adopt a resolution authorizing the hiring of an Information Services Systems Specialist due to resignation, first and final reading.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? Comments? Please cast your vote.
Adopt a resolution to hire or promote a clerk type S2 in the Public Utilities, first and final reading.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? Comments? Please cast your vote, Council.
Adopt a resolution authorizing the hiring of one Boja City Civic Center permanent part-time employee, first and final reading.
So moved.
Second.
Any comments? Please cast your vote.
Adopt a resolution to hire one utility worker at the water treatment plant, first and final reading.
So moved.
Second.
Comments, anyone? Council, cast your vote.
Adopt a resolution to promote a chief operator to assistant superintendent at the water treatment plant, first and final reading.
So moved.
Second.
Comments? Please cast your vote, Council.
Affirm placement in the official minutes, the appointment of fire driver Jason D. Shelton, reappointment as the Fire Department Representative of the Boja City Municipal Fire and Police Civil Service Board, appointment effective March 7th, 2018, and expires March the 6th, 2021.
So moved.
Is Mr. Shelton here? He's not here, okay. We won't hold it against him. Any comments? Council, please cast your vote.
For Jason Shelton, hold on just a moment, Council. Approve the reappointment of Andy Holly to the E911 Board, reappointment effective March 1st, 2018 through March 1st, 2022.
So moved.
Second.
This is a reappointment, is Mr. Holly here? Any comments? Please cast your vote.
Approve the reappointment of James Williams to the E911 Board, reappointment effective March 1st, 2018 through March 1st, 2022.
So moved.
Second.
It's Mr. Williams here. Is Mr. Williams here? Any comments? Please cast your vote, council.
Approve the appointment of Billy Jordan to the E911 Board. Appointment effective January 8, 2018 through March 1, 2019.
So moved.
Second.
And is Mr. Jordan here? Any comments? Please cast your vote, council.
Approve the reappointment of Walter Old Bigby Jr. to the Caddo Bossier Port Commission. Reappointment effective March 30, 2018 through March 29, 2024.
So moved.
Second.
Third.
Okay, so on this one, I recall Mr. Montgomery requested, it's a big week to be here. Is he here?
No, he's not.
He's not here?
He's in our great capital city of Baton Rouge.
Okay.
He had pertinent business that arose, so.
Are we going to hold it against him or not? We will not, okay. Any comments? Please cast your vote, council.
Approve report of second and final change order for 2016 citywide concrete repairs at increase of $126,181.19. Total cost of contract with change order $993,025.19.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? Comments? Please cast your vote. Council, that's the last item on this agenda. Mr. Mayor?
I have nothing, thank you.
I would.
Yes, sir.
One request from Mr. Hudson. Please. I figured you'd want to come up here, you know, for one last stand. I would like to request, and with the mayor's permission as well, that we, the council, receive an update on our road projects and whatever the council's wishes. And you think would be good, once a month, once every 30 days, you know, where we stand, like Innovative Drive. I mean, we're getting into the season where we can hopefully start building and construction in the Walter Old Bigby Carriage Way. And, you know, just keep everybody informed on.
There's Viking Drive, there's Coleman Street.
Right, all your various road projects, just kind of give us a up-to-date. If the council wishes, I think it'd be good, you know, to.
And what, excuse me, what frequency did you suggest?
Once a month? If, is that?
Except for Shed Road, maybe every week on Shed Road.
Every year, maybe.
We can start off with 30 days and see how that goes, and whatever the council's wishes and yours.
Good idea. Highway 82.
And we'll begin next, in two weeks?
Do you want to put it on the agenda for April 3rd?
Well, I'd really prefer to start in two weeks.
March the 20th. Okay.
Like a workshop thing, or? What? Yeah. You know, so that the public and the reporters and the news media and everybody can get an up, you know what I mean? Just keep everybody updated. And I think it's good for everybody to know what we're doing to alleviate traffic problems because as the mayor and everybody well knows, the one big thing when we run a poll in our community is traffic, traffic, traffic. I mean, that, that's the one thing on people's mind, and we need to let them know that we're spending their taxpayer dollars and we're doing things for the future to help alleviate that. So if we can keep it at front and center, I think it'd be good for everyone. Thank you.
Thank you so much. We would like to celebrate and congratulate our Bossier City Clerk for her promotion to Vice President of the Elmay Clerk Association. This year, she's a vice president, so we want to congratulate her. And as you all know, Ms. McBride has excel in all areas. She continued to be very, I guess, assertive and moving, and she has done a great job for the city. And with that board that she's on, it brings us more expertise. So I appreciate her, and she does a great job. Nothing further, meeting adjourned.